Saturday's working on material.
I'm gonna have to work on my radio voice.
All right, has everyone had an opportunity to look at the agenda?
Yeah, um, we are not seeing Anna tonight.
Yeah, I did call up.
Okay. Board's aware of that.
No other changes, additions, substitutions, operations of any type?
Other than we got a few pieces of mail in the last 24 hours that didn't even make it to this. So, um, I don't know, I, Montz upon, we need to talk about, we need to talk about, the host agreement for, for daughters, we need to talk about the proposed host agreement for the, which isn't even zoned yet, but for a commercial facility in the commercial district. I would talk to council about that and what his recommendation was on how to proceed on that. Let's see, we did get an ambulance statement in for revision, report for the billing committee about Pope's Tavern and the chimney there. I think there's anything else.
Yes.
The town meeting warrant and printing, revised cost and wage personnel meeting coming up this week. Anything else?
Yes, you got an email from.
Right, I actually.
Oh, is it on it?
I put it on it. Yeah, half it. No, I missed that.
Okay.
But yes.
Okay, I'm sorry I asked. Do I, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You may ask. Selectment minutes for a regular session of February 27th, 2018, the executive session for February 13th, 2018.
I will make a motion to approve those minutes as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, you may ask. Mr. Garen, you're on.
Uh, I move to approve the following commitments. Ambulance commitment number 3D for $41,442. Vindal warrant number 86 for $113,333. And ambulance commitment 3E for $15,548.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And approve the following selectmen bills. Uh, law account, Matthew, Vindar and Company Incorporated, $1,552, no cents. Insurance, CNA, CNA security direct bill for, one for family duty and total is $1,362.50.
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
That was a premature second.
Town hall electricity, national grid, uh, monthly electric bill, $1,965.93. And the final one is for youth and rec, uh, fan expenditures, $16.60 electricity from national grid. Second please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you may ask. Mr. Silling, you're on.
Um, uh, Pontz upon and the aluminum sulfate project, I did hear back from DEP and DPH during the last couple of days. Remember, I had asked DEP for some direction as to whether they want us to continue with the pump house, um, design or to try to do another dosage of the aluminum sulfate by boat this spring. Uh, the consensus in fact was to go with two 10 gram, which would be less than what we did this past spring, the spring of 17, but more than the very small doses that we did, I believe in 16. But recommended either once with 10 grams this spring and once in the fall, or once this spring and one next spring. In either case, I don't know that we have enough money to do the second dosage. We have, we do have $75,000 in earmark from the Department of Public Health. We may be able to use some of the 319 remaining funds because the DPH money is not federal money, we can match it against the federal money. Um, since it's DEP coming back and recommending this, I believe we'll be able to get the amendment to the contract for the 319 funds, um, so allow us to use it for the aluminum sulfate treatment rather than pump house. Um, well, I'm gonna contact everybody, say we'd like to, unless the board feels otherwise, I'd like to go down that road. They're concerned that the pump house is still too much of an experiment. They'd like to see it in more places and other parts of the country before trying to, um, do such a facility here. But what I do need then is DEP to sign off an amendment to allow us to use the 319 money. I can then at some point figure out if we can in fact afford the second treatment. But my plan would be to, we've usually done the treatment on late May, early June. If I can get all the, everything lined up, I'll aim for that, get DEP, get natural heritage, get solitude on the schedule.
Yeah.
For that time, and maybe hopefully we'll keep the pond open for more weeks or so.
Yeah, so I just have a quick question for you, Charlie. I know that last week you, or about 10 days ago, you were going back and forth with Brian Creighton, did you ever?
It's not gonna resolve it.
Okay.
Off the water levels.
So I know you have a lot going on with the warrant and the budget and all those kinds of things, but maybe for the second week in April, we could schedule another Montz working group meeting? Just so that we can all kinda catch up on where we are now?
Okay.
If that's okay.
Uh, trailer permit, um, this is just a status report. The billing sector has issued a trailer permit for 31 Oak Place due to fire damage at the property. That permit expires on May 13th, it's a short term, 60 day permit. Board be issuing the longer term permit. Pam's gonna work with the property owner to have a hearing for the extended permit issued by the board on April 24th.
Did we get any type of estimates, how long?
Nothing yet, no. No, I know that Rob issued a six month permit in the sense of for living there, but it's not the trailer, but the trailer permits are for 60 days.
Okay.
It was just a portion of the house, still a lot of damage, but it was just one.
Later tonight, I'll talk, when we're looking at the warrant, I'll talk to you about the zoning amendments. Um, Kestrel Street, Kestrel Lane streetlights, however, you did get the petition, um, with the signatures of at least 10 registered voters, so I'm recommending, uh, that the board reopen the warrant, place that article on the warrant and close the warrant for the annual town meeting.
Would you, I will make a motion that reopen the warrant and to allow the article for Kestrel Lane streetlights.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I will make a motion that we close the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, you may ask.
The board did get a town bank form from Kenneth Hudrow, who's interested in serving youth and rec. Pam has forwarded that to youth and rec and we'll hear back from them.
He's pretty involved with, um, the youth support program, so that's nice.
Old Colony Elder Services is looking for a nomination for director. Pam's going to contact the current director and we'll touch base and find out whether that person wants to continue to serve. Let's see, we're already gonna talk about 16 seater later. Pam and Amber did go through the notes, I, the changes that have been made on the selectmen's policies. We did note that we no longer do the department receipt turnovers. So with your permission, we'll revise the policies, take that off the list of what's included in the meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion that we do that.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, the board should know that there will be a special wage and personnel board meeting on Friday, March 30th at noon here. They're gonna discuss recommendations for the changes to the bylaw, including any across the board wage increases, any changes in grades. They may also talk about work on the classification compensation plan. I posted for the board because I've been told that we may have a quorum at that meeting of the board, so obviously everybody's invited to go, but you don't have to worry about showing up and finding out, but we did post, we did post.
Yeah, I really wanna go. So I, the only thing I have, I have to meet my parents at 1:30 in Hanover, so I can try and push them off if I have to.
Uh, town meeting warrant and the printing, um, because we are mailing more of them out, we ended up with a larger number of households who posted office boxes to send these out to. We've upped the number to print from 3,500 to 3,650, uh, as you would expect Harding, then increased its price from 4,480 to 4,671 per page, but that's proportional based on the number of copies, so amassing the board approve the change in the contract with Harding.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, you may ask.
Um, for the host community agreement, um, I'm reckon, council's gone through this already, one more time, made the one more change to deal with the possibility of a manufacturing exemption. Four daughters is fine with the, with the changes and is ready to sign if the board's ready to sign. And then if the other parts of the puzzle would still have to be going into place, one is on the zoning, one is on, um, the licensing, they'll have to at some point, for instance, have a community form of their own. I'm happy to get that set up, but that's their form, not on the board's, obviously I probably would post for the board and such. So, you know, whenever the board's ready or if the board wants to make more changes, this is ready to go.
I know that Lenny, you look at it.
Yep.
Was there anything else you saw that needed to be added to it?
No, I think from the original draft that there was, it was kind of the sieve, so I think they addressed most of it. I still, I mean, we talked about uses and I think, I know that things like odor and lights and all that stuff are for the zoning, but if the, if the argument in favor of the facility, which is a bit unprecedented, is the money aspect of it, then to me, this is the most important step because of the situation with revenues. So quite frankly, I think we've talked about, when we make the decision, we need to think of the whole town, which includes the folks, there aren't many that live in the area, and I think it being unprecedented, we could potentially see a pretty large act equity, right? So I, I've looked at some other large developments in the state of Massachusetts and I found something that, um, it's called a resident impact fund. And basically it's set up to, uh, take money from the revenues, put it in, it would be up to, uh, the residents if they were to sell, to prove that there's been a reduction in equity as a direct result of the facility. They usually assign a timeline, four or five years, whatever makes the most sense. But I just think for the people that live there, the worst case scenario is, you know, I know that they gave a proposal that said that the impacts will be minimum and hopefully they will be. And some of the families that I've talked to that live in the area, they don't wanna leave. It's not something they, you know, pick up families and move them or whatever, but if you step out in your front porch, you have a cup of coffee or you're waiting for the bus with your kid and it just reeks of marijuana, you know, that's a, a large impact. And so I, I'm not asking for a check.
Yeah.
An annual check or anything like that. The onus would be on the residents, but I find it hard to argue with, at least trying to set that up, because if the whole town's gonna benefit, but just a small subsegment's gonna, you know, be shouldering 99% of the burden, I think we need to at least give people an option to get out if that's the way they wanna go. Maybe somebody that works there, you know, if it, like I said, if it's bad enough that people start to leave, that they have a chance to buy a home or, um, you know, whatever it may be.
Do you have language, like, do you have examples of language?
Yeah, um, I, I can pull it, I haven't called some of the town halls that drafted them yet, but, um. The town of Milford, for instance, had an agreement, it never went through because they voted down the casino.
Down the casino.
Yeah, they had an HCA, uh, and they had language and they were able to set up, so I'm sure I could call them and get the, uh, the details behind it, but.
Yeah, if you could do that and send it to Charlie, that would be.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's. But and that, and the point there will also would be, it'd still have to be worked out through whatever financing and budgetary process, in the sense of if we're gonna put a set aside, which I don't think is wrong, I think it's very likely legal to do, it will still have to be part of going through the budget process and setting aside that money, a special fund, and then working out, as you were saying, Len, to determine, okay, now that you have the money in the fund, I determine the lessening, if there is any value, that type of thing.
Yeah, there's definitely criteria, everything else involved. But I did ask, because if, I, I, I think Charlie would send me the email about the Sharon one, which it did have a line item for how it was being used, so I don't know if you're ever.
Well, it was, but it was specifically for the nonprofit.
No, they had line items in there for town expenses for, it was like 15,000 annual payment for a 4th of July celebration.
Yeah, but.
Which was pretty specific.
But there was a specific payment from HCA to them, it wasn't part of the 3%.
Right.
It was aside, it was a separate.
You know, I, I, and the board can not do this and could say, go back to them and say, we want more money, but, you know, let me put it this way, we, we don't do that with other businesses in town. In the sense of, we, when Walmart or Stop &amp; Shop get their necessary permits, there was no demand in there that they make a donation every year to a nonprofit or to a town entity. And I guess I have a problem treating different businesses differently in that.
Well, they don't have a, like Walmart doesn't have an HCA the way that.
No, I understand that, but basically what we're saying is that unless you sign that agreement that includes a stipulation, we're not gonna work with you.
Sure. No, I'm not trying to.
Yeah.
What, so, so what would the process be to have something like that set up?
Well, there's nothing preventing any business from making a donation to.
No, he's talking about the, he's talking about the residents. No, no, this is separate. We were, we're willing to do this.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
He's saying in addition to that, he doesn't think that.
Oh, no, no, I, I would expect, I mean, the town's looking at making eventually millions over the course of, over many years if they go up to speed and.
No, I mean, for the resident impact fund, I just, we just need to do the additional research.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I'm in favor of the concept that we can work it out.
But what I would say is that it comes out in 3%, it doesn't come out.
Yeah.
So, so what we'll do is if, if all this happens and we start getting money and then the town votes to set aside that money into a particular fund for that particular.
Whatever that amount is.
So in the, in the agreement that we have, there's nothing in the agreement that says that if property values go down in that area, that the four daughters is responsible for paying them their.
Right.
There will be, yeah.
I wouldn't expect.
I just wanna make it clear because that's something my list that was gone.
You did comment the onus would be on the residents and that.
Yes.
It would really be a tough thing to, so I mean, it's not gonna be an easy process.
No, and like I said, hopefully with the proposal that they gave, I know that they said, you know, that there's gonna be filters in the manufacturing piece of it, but.
If it doesn't work.
If it doesn't, right, if, if there's no impact, then we won't see much, and all these things work is that if, at the end of the timeline, it's not a continuous thing.
Right.
You know what I mean? So I think, I'm assuming that they're not gonna have, you know, the entire facility grow, 'cause I believe the, the smell only occurs at whatever.
It just keeps coming.
For them to have a steady flow of product, I imagine that they have to stagger, you know, so that's where the fear of it being constant is.
Yes.
So if there's no impact, I know I'm, I'm not gonna move, that's not something I wanna do, but if it turns out that there is, and, and, I mean, the solar field, we heard about the week prior, there's several of those you can drive to and look at and determine, you know, I don't wanna look at a solar field, so I'm settled.
Right.
With something like this, with the size of it, it's just there's no pressing in the state, so it's just an insurance policy.
Yeah.
And, and if at the end, nobody moves because the impact's not bad, the money would go back to the fund anyway.
Okay, so what's the board's pleasure?
Um, I, I think that we should have Lenny send the information.
So hold off.
Hold off on this until.
Okay, well, I guess my question is, let's say we find out we can do this, it still won't be part of the HCA.
It's not gonna be part of the agreement.
Oh, right, right, right.
Yeah, so it doesn't, it's irrelevant.
Something they would go for for a town meeting.
If there's no way to distinguish that the 3% would be diverted and.
Yeah, I haven't, when I looked at, as you have, I looked, looked at the host community agreements, there's not been, all the 3% are making the numbers up, you know, 100,000 goes to the police department, 50,000 goes to fire, another 50,000 goes to highway, et cetera. It's not been segregated in that fashion.
Yeah, not.
Wouldn't want it to, you know. So we can actually go ahead and sign?
I would say so if the board wants, well, I wouldn't say, I would say that you would authorize me to send it to.
Yeah, to council.
Four da, no, council's already.
Four daughters.
For four daughters, bring their signature, and then I would bring it back to them and work for your signature.
Okay, okay. You gonna move that?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. You had a 745.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, we're tardy.
Bill Russell?
Yes.
Come on, oh, you're already. You don't have to come on, Doug. You're here for a live entertainment permit?
Yes.
And I think, uh, the reason you're here is because it came before us at our last meeting and, uh, the sentiment of the board was that typically we're only allowed until nine o'clock. I believe your request was to 10 o'clock.
Yes.
Speak to that.
It's a smaller wedding, older crowd, the chair, there's really, you know, nothing to collaborate on more than, you know, it's just a smaller wedding, the timeframe of it all, the, the, the three o'clock star and, but it began, it's kind of planned on prior to, to knowing the nine o'clock, so I figured, that's like the best, we'd get to request 10 o'clock, so that's why I'm here, I'm talking to neighbors and everyone's.
Yeah, that, that's the key.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Did you promise him a piece of cake?
No, I actually on December, on December 31st, woke up two footsteps going through my property and I decided to go and suit up and I followed them early that morning until I found sufficient evidence to call the cops and the police ended up following up and finding, we traced them from Cranberry, uh, from Cranberry Drive over to Christmas Tree. And then back around, but I spent three hours that morning hiking in zero degree weather to, to find a car that had been moving into, so I knocked on several doors and introduced myself to every single person who's the track, who the tracks went up to, and then I ended up, had, you know, with a congregation of people on Cranberry Drive.
Is he telling us this so we can give him permission to have us 10 o'clock?
No, it's a great way of meeting your neighbors.
No, I ended up telling the neighbors.
Yeah, this is a great way of.
Maybe to do something.
By the way, I'm getting married.
Exactly, I had all these guys out in the freezing cold on Cranberry Drive and I said, hey, by the way, on June 23rd, we're getting married, you know, so you'll hear the, the party going on and, um, you know, so.
And they're all supportive, so that's how.
Yeah, they were all, yeah.
That's our major, major concerns, that, you know, what the, you know, quality of life, we don't want any noise in real life.
Yeah, well, we've been there since, what, 73, I think, and I was born in 78, so been there long enough where I think a lot of folks.
You're an older crowd now, though.
What's that?
You're an older crowd now.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, the neighborhood's.
Over the hill gang.
Exactly, so, you know, I've known a lot of folks and, um, you know, spoke to and met those that I hadn't met before, so everyone was on board, so I figured, next best thing was to ask you, folks, for 10 o'clock instead of 9 o'clock.
So the only thing that I would want is, and I want verification, is I want a letter from everybody in the neighborhood, so that's okay.
Absolutely.
We want the dis with the.
I would move that we.
Yeah, right, right.
We allow the 10 o'clock as long as there is no major complaints from the neighbors at this point. Is anybody here from the community? You, you're from that neighborhood?
Yeah.
Why?
And you're, and you're fine with that? You're down with that, yeah.
So, so you're going to the party?
'Cause, you know, I'll ground you. I will ground you.
I'll move.
That's fine.
I move that we allow the 10 o'clock.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
All right, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Very exciting.
And be careful, I chased a guy into the woods once and I'm not sure if he was armed or anything, that's brave thing you did there.
Yeah, well, it was daylight, so, you know, things.
Yeah, even so, yeah.
I know.
I'm encouraged.
I know.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come in.
No, thank you.
Congratulations again.
And good luck, you know, with, with the marriage and all the others.
Oh, I don't need luck.
That's right.
I don't need luck.
You're lucky to find.
But I appreciate it.
Well, you got 40 some years to catch up with me, so.
All right. I'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
All right, Bill.
Thank you for your time.
Congrats.
Have a great night.
You too, thank you.
Take care.
All right.
Well, we've got some time before.
Let's work up a moment, it's, um, let's see, the dog here is continuing to.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Why?
Why what?
Why is the dog here and continuing?
That's what, that's what we voted on, April 10th.
April 10th?
Yeah.
I thought it was for the next meeting, or that would be April 10th.
No, it's on April 10th.
You just lost track of what April 10th.
I know, wow, I can't believe.
Because we had a meeting last week, we don't normally have one, two in a row, that's what throws you off.
All right, okay, sorry, I'm like, I'm really passionate about this dog.
That's fine. Chapter 61A, I did get a price from our appraiser, 4,500, I'll be talking with the planning committee on Thursday, hoping to get a reserve fund transfer from them, um, so we can get the parcels appraised.
I know, I, I thought it was a pretty pricey price.
For the appraisal?
Yeah.
No.
No.
Been in the range of what, given the number of parcels and such, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, chimney of Pope's Tavern, just the billing committee wrote a note to the board indicating they're taking the chimney down in front of the building, they'll cap that because it's in poor condition and presents a safety issue, they don't want bricks falling on people. They'll discuss a replacement once with the renovation projects are completed.
Oh, okay.
Uh, ambulance abatement, um, they sent, sent in a revised ambulance abatement for 2018 to 40,804.16.
I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the revised February 2018 number to 40,704.16.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, the fire suppression system, the invitation for bids is gonna be released on Wednesday, the 28th, I think it's going to be about four weeks later that the bids will be due, and we have to do the sub bids first, that takes a couple of weeks, and then the final GC bids will be.
Are they gonna be able to do it this summer?
It's there, I, when I talk to the architects, yeah, they feel that they can still get this done.
Yeah, it's still gonna be done by school start.
Yes.
September.
I spoke to Matt Durkey this morning and he seemed to get some feedback that, that was positive in terms of getting it done.
Hey, when we get the band, the band back together, those meetings we were having.
I can have another one of those, too. Why don't we just do?
You know me, I love to see people.
Yeah.
Did, um, did the recommendations of the review?
I don't know what.
Get incorporated into?
I don't have a formal set from him.
For the.
I know he was there and met with the people.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm, 'cause we haven't met since then.
Yeah.
Assuming that that's got incorporated into the, uh, package.
I would, I know that we've been really focusing on the fire suppression, but I, I just think it would be nice for all of us to get back together and talk about the windows, the siding, I mean, that in itself, I know it won't really affect as much as the fire suppression for timing, but.
Well.
I'm just curious if they've ordered.
They should be there at the same time, that always creates some issues.
They should be there at the same time, that always creates some issues.
Yeah. Um, I don't know, unfortunately, I do want to talk about the warrant and such, but I hope we have more than another two minutes before eight o'clock.
Who was, who was I, yeah?
You don't have any o'clock, do you?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, unregistered vehicle permit, I believe.
Is that why you're here?
Okay, if you guys want to sign this, um, entertainment permit, I'll.
Oh. Cool.
Sorry, I guess I'll, I'll hold off.
Is that Bill Russell's son?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yep, it's Russell Junior.
I'll take that, this way.
Wrong lady. What does it all look like?
Well, I can, um, well, the other marijuana, the, um, the same folks who had proposed changing the zoning for allowing the marijuana offices, they had sent a very, um, short proposed H C A, I had talked to council about that, and there were two things, one is, his feeling is, aside from the obvious changes, things like names and addresses and things like that, we should maintain the same H C A for both organizations if, if this comes to fruition. But his other point was, there's a little point in the town spending money on a S, H C A proposal for the second facility until the town makes a decision one way or the other, whether they're going to allow it in the commercial.
Yeah.
So the board's mission, I'm going to contact the folks and say, the board's not opposing or supporting an H C A at this point, but they don't want to move forward on this until the town makes a decision about whether to allow in the commercial district, and then if that happens, then we can.
Yeah, because we didn't know, the, the last vote it was, was the industrial or.
Right.
That's what we.
Yes.
Ms. Evers, do you know when the planning board will be talking about this particular?
They don't even have, they just got it and they'll probably be having the hearing on May third.
On what time, which, would they?
May third.
I think it's May third.
Oh, okay.
That's the one to month, right?
May third.
Plus room.
Oh.
Are you good with that?
No, I'm in, I'm in Yosemite Park.
It's a good place for us.
Uh, no.
You can fly everybody.
You can have a yodeling contest.
Let me see who's out there.
Eight o'clock, yeah.
Darn it.
Entertainment from Walmart.
No, we can do that while I'm getting the folks.
Right there, they do it every year.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
It's a Walmart. Thank you, Kenny, ma'am. Up front would be great, thank you so much. You have lots of friends here, lots of people. Good you got the, you know, study.
It's eight o'clock and we have scheduled appointments, we have Robert Hathaway the second.
Uh, the third.
The third, uh, second, sorry about that. Now it's the third. I'm here to talk about multiple unregistered vehicles. You want to, uh, tell us what we're?
Um, well, I just got a new job recently, working for a big water pump, a separate pump, and I've been working quite a bit more than I was, so I haven't had as much time as I used to, like, uh, I just like working on my vehicles and I have a few older vehicles, like I have a seventy-nine pickup truck, and then I have a seventy-six pickup truck, and then, uh, my, my daily, which is an eighty-eight, and I just, what I do on my off time, I like just tinkering with motors and playing with all that stuff, and the previous tenant had my house, was, um, not too cleanly, and had a whole bunch of just miscellaneous stuff that when I moved in there, it was just a mess, so I tried making the best of it, and uh, just kind of working on that right now.
The landlord just, um.
Yeah, we just built up a.
Just for the record, if you can, if, who's ever speaking, if you could just identify yourself to Pam, so.
Oh, Robert Hathaway.
No, I did Hathaway, yeah, okay. The owner of the property just, um.
Yeah, just did a whole bunch of.
A thirty-foot dumpster.
Thirty, yeah.
Thirty, yeah, dumpster, and we just built it.
And, uh, I fixed all the fence, too, also.
With the Norriston, those two Norristons, the full fence down, put the fence back up.
And we're trying to get everything behind the fence, so that the neighbors can see it and.
And he bought a big, he spent like three hundred dollars on like a reinforced tent to put some supplies in there, and that got crushed with the Norriston.
I gotta clean that up, too.
Yeah.
So you, this is a property that you don't own?
No, we lease.
And you lease, and so when you took, when you moved in, I'm sorry, when you moved in, it was, the property was already a mess?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
And you moved in without, did the landlord have a plan to clean it?
He said he was going to have everything cleaned up.
And how long ago was that?
Yeah, well, we'll be there three years.
Oh, that's a long time now.
That's a long time.
And so you haven't addressed it with him in three years?
No, I, I asked, but we just never got around to it, and then what's all this stuff?
Well, one of the things that, you know, so we don't get off track, we're interested in the unregistered vehicles you have on your property, the other stuff is being dealt with another board, am I correct?
Sorry.
Okay, I, I don't want to get into that, something else, but the only problem that I have with, with the situation is that we've had several of these come before our board, and one of the issues is that our bylaw only allows for one unregistered vehicle on the property at any given time. You have more than one unregistered vehicle, then we have a problem, that's what the issue is right now. You know, to clean up the property, that's your landlord's issue, and I'm sure if you give a proper name to the zoning enforcement, so take care, but what, what is your intent with the vehicles that you have and when, if you'd be getting rid of them?
Well, my, um, my first pickup truck that I go on fifteen, which is out of seventy-nine, I, well, I have a camper on that, I want to make that like my summer truck, so I could drive that around in the summertime, and then I have my, um, my eighty-eight, which I buy a flatbed for, that's my daily driver, like, all year round.
That's registered?
That's registered right now, and then I have, um, that seventy-six C ten, which is a little short bed pickup truck, and I want to just have that as.
You see what I property is, though, you know, you've only got one of them that's registered.
Yeah.
You've got others that aren't registered. What you need to tell this board, what you're going to do to get rid of that off the property or registered vehicles, because otherwise, the bylaw says one car.
Without a permit.
Without a permit, yeah. Unregistered vehicle.
Yeah, but how would I, I understand that, like.
This is a hobby, I, I know it probably doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter if it's a hobby, because this is a residential neighborhood, and there are people that don't necessarily like to look out their house and see a bunch of unregistered cars, so, and if the prop, so, I will bring up again, if the property is not kept, I know that you lease the property, but by adding unregistered vehicles, it's making it less attractive to the neighborhood, so you're making the issue worse, so that's what we need to address.
Okay.
And, and we have a history of, especially in close residential neighborhoods, not allowing for more than the one unregistered vehicle because of what it creates, especially if you're working on, because, and I'm not saying you're doing this, but typically it involves having additional parts, maybe an engine block laying around, or a transmission, or axle, or, or what have you, so it isn't just the vehicle, it's a lot of random parts potentially laying around, so we've been very reluctant to go down that road, because once you do it, you have to kind of be open to anybody else's, uh, request. I, I would find it difficult personally to support this.
Do you want to hear from?
I'm going to ask, but I don't know if anybody else has.
No, I, I, I think I said my.
I just have one suggestion to make, and it wasn't the neighbors' approval, it's that you have one registered vehicle, other than the one you have registered, you're going to be allowed, you can't be allowed to have one unregistered vehicle, so you've got to get rid of one of them.
Yes.
You can't have three. So that's, that's the choice that I see, I don't see any other choice.
Do you have any, uh, anybody who wants to make a comment, a neighbor, a butter?
I think, let me see the street, live across the street, now, Buck East, not a big problem, but got a lot of concerns about cars coming in, if they're unregistered, how are they going to get there to begin with, or we need three to make one for them, and, you know, you may be a good mechanic and whatever, but if you're draining fluids and whatever, we're still a hundred wells down there, and I don't really feel we need a garage or a hobby, uh, dealing with that type of, uh, situation, yeah. As far as the cleanup, you did, you walked into a mess, and I think that was like five years ago, and it's still a mess. Uh, one of the boards has made some leaps and bounds in the last few weeks, but in the last, well, they said they've been three years, and I was up here before that, and.
It's been an ongoing issue, yes.
Junk, stone, top of junk, and pay the taxes from the look next to a junkyard, that's not what I'm looking for.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Um, Tom, we did get letters, um, one from the building commissioner, um, this is Rob Petrelli, this letter is in response for a selectman inquiry regarding an application for a permit for multiple unregistered vehicles located at Sixteenth Cedar Street, this office is currently in the process for viewing, addressing multiple possible zoning issues at sixteen and at Eight Cedar Street, among these issues, there are multiple unregistered vehicles in a state of disrepair, multiple and excessive vehicle parts or debris, apparent indications of one or more businesses being, being conducted in a residential neighborhood consisting of construction-related storage and stockpiling of building material and waste, other zoning issues of concern are various accessory structures and buildings which appear to be unpermitted and exceeding zoning requirements, obviously this gentleman isn't responsible for all that, but the problem is with the property. Alan Diaz, who's a member of the board of health, sent in a photograph and came in to indicate his concerns with the property also, and at least at this point, allowing an unregistered vehicle permit for, um, we did get a letter from one of the other neighbors, Peter Alboni at Five Cedar Street, um, his concerns are, many of them are the same that the gentleman just indicated, including the question, concerns on the wells in the area since they're not on town water, um, and he, and again, I'm not indicating that the applicant's been doing this, but the history of the property is it's very likely other fluids and such have been deposited on the property, and there's a long concern of well contamination in the area, um, so, and this person was not, also in favor of, was against having a multiple vehicle permit.
Okay.
And there, and also, the billing inspector did provide some of the documentation from the last ten years about problems with the property.
Okay.
Again, this isn't necessarily you, it's a combination of problems, uh, I, I, we, I personally can't support this, I don't know, do you have a motion on the floor to deny?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we deny the request for a, um.
For multiple vehicles?
Yes.
That doesn't say you can't have one?
You may have one.
Unregistered, one unregistered, one registered vehicle, but a third vehicle is going to.
But that doesn't mean that you don't have to keep, continue to make sure that it's behind the fence and that the property, you are tenants, I know you don't own the property, but it is also your responsibility to make sure whatever you have is done in a very tidy manner.
At least your stuff, the landlord's stuff is a little issue.
Yeah. The car parts and all that stuff will need to be tidied up.
All right.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right, thank you.
Fine, so.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
I know the fire chief is here.
Yeah.
Can talk about how it's.
Yeah.
Chief, you have something else? I saw her punching her inside. So, I asked the fire chief to come in, um, this is due because my colleague Liz Dennehy from Plinton had written to me about the possibility of both the town Plinton using it, some of its grant money, and the town Halifax using some of its grant money to hire outside consultant to do a cost analysis of various options, if the two towns were interested in some sort of joint shared services, whatever flavor that might end up being, but to do some cost analysis of various configurations, personnel, equipment, stations, things like that. Um, before we went too far down the road, I thought it would be a good idea for the chief and for the board to be talking, at least, is there interest in moving forward? Because obviously, if Plinton, my colleague in Plinton is saying this, there's at least some interest, there's no guarantee that we end up in the same place, but at least there's some interest. Um, and then how to approach that is that, I know you all were talking about having the fire study committee here in Halifax, reestablished, I believe, Plinton is thinking of doing a similar committee.
Yeah.
And basically, how does the, how would the town Halifax, sort of, or, and the fire chief want to proceed in terms of what area to push on, because there's really maybe three, there's the governance issue, how, whatever agreement we work out, what the details of that would be, there's staffing levels and service levels, and there's then the cost, but I'm not sure which of these three, that is the most important, but which of these three should be done first in, to see what we wanted to proceed or not, I'd mind to have some discussion.
Okay, so if you don't mind, I'd like to take, so, um, I've had some conversations both with Jason and with the, one of the selectmen from, um, Plinton, and we also, you know, last week, we re, we reconvene the fire study committee, and we have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, and Jason had, it's at seven o'clock.
Six over.
Oh, six thirty, oh, six thirty, thank you, yeah, six thirty, because we like to get early. And it's, I think Patty was going to post it, and Pam, you reserved this room, right? Remember I called you last week?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Anyway, so, um, the chief sent out an email, Lenny's part of the committee, um, a thorough email that included MRI's report from Plinton, it also included the YouTube version of our meeting when we met with Plinton a year and a half ago.
Back in November sixteen.
It also included, um, I think, the recent selectman meetings from Plinton, and I think it also.
Copy of the grant application, and then got, tried to give as much information as advanced, so they could do some advance reading, I guess.
Right, so I think, and this is, I'm going to just speak, just because I've been on fire study for many years, so, and nobody needs to agree with me on what, how I think it should happen, but I, what I believe should happen is that each community convenes their own fire study. We're going to look at the things, and we've sent it out ahead of time, so that when we sit down on Tuesday, we can have an intelligent conversation about, you know, the different options and how we feel about it, and it's, I think it's our responsibility, that committee is to sort of vet those different, um, things. I also think, Charlie, that the way that the whole thing is going to be governed is key in all of this, and I think you touched upon it earlier, you know, if we can't agree on a governance of how we, we see it happening, that may end up killing the whole thing, but in order to even get to that point, I think that it's important for all of us to prove if, is it a good idea at all? So we'll all sit down and look at it and vet it. But my conversation with, um, Christine Joy was, we have this amount of money, and I talked briefly with Jason about it today, and we need to be smart about how we spend that money, and because we've sort of vetted different plans, and I know you weren't part of the committee, the committee at that point, but I think we've all sort of done cost analysis, I think you do, you've done so much work on it, like, even when we were looking at the staffing to add that third person, like, I think we've all done this exercise with your leadership so many times, that we don't need to spend part of the grant money to have a third party come in and kind of do that work for us. I think that we're better off kind of saving that money for the things that we feel that we could use a little help on, and that.
Creating the intermunicipal, if, if we spent all the money to do a cost analysis, then there'll be no money left to do the intermunicipal agreement, I, and just in my opinion, like, I think that we, most of the cost analysis would be done by us anyway, I can't see how a, how a consultant can come in and do that, so, maybe it's possible, but I think it's just as easy for us to do it and better.
You're going to have to provide him everything for him to do it anyway, right?
Yeah.
So to spend, and, and I think that Plinton, they're kind of looking for a little bit of guidance on, you know, this is a little, very new to them, even looking at the fire department stuff, where we've done it a lot, um, so they were kind of looking to us for some guidance on that, and I think, that's my opinion, I hate to see the money spent for another consultant to do an analysis and then not have the money when we really needed to put the actual intermunicipal agreement together.
And we also have using part of the grant money, you had that great idea about the training, and we also, I think, need to save a little bit, because if, so we, we, we look at it, if we think it's a good idea, and we may not, but I have a guess that financially and for all the benefits that I think it could bring both committees, I mean, communities, that we move forward, then we would do a series of forums for our community to have our residents sort of weigh in.
Right, because it has to work for us, too.
And if we pass that, and, you know, we have a sense that our community is on board with that, then we start the discussion about the, the agreement and how that looks, but we also may need money for when we start to sort of integrate things, like, we may need new uniforms, we may need other things that we can have that grant money for. So when I talked to Christine Joy just late this afternoon, I explained to her what I thought would be best to do with the money, but I think that it would be a great idea for the two selectman committees and maybe the fire chief and their acting, um, person to get together and kind of talk about the grant money and where we see we need to spend it, like, we, I have my idea, and Charlie has a great, like, I had a conversation with Charlie today, and you were great about, you know, we have to kind of know that we all agree with this, that this is something we want to explore, and I don't know how you feel about that, Troy, if you're hesitant, or.
It's not so much that I'm hesitant, it's just that I, I hate meetings to decide to have another meeting, if you, if you get my drift. You've got, they've just put money on MRI to do a study, we've done numerous studies to get to the point where we are in functioning as well as we are. If they don't want, if the townspeople of Plinton, I would like to see something voted at their town meeting that says that they want to get involved in this, they want to do this, it's not just going to be, the selectman says, okay, let's go ahead and do it.
Oh, no, I think.
I think they're at the point that they don't really know what they're considering yet, and that's why.
But that's the problem, they don't, they don't have anything in front of them to really look at.
So I had a brief meeting yesterday with John Trainer, Mark Russo, and Liz Dennehy, and I, and I kind of said, I think, to move forward, one of the things that they need and I, and I kind of said, I think to move forward, one of the things that they need to consider is what level of service are they looking for? I mean, we went, we had a meeting a year and a half ago, and I went with three conceptual plans, just off the top of my head, of what it could possibly be, but that, that never really defined what it was they're looking for. So I think that their committee, it, it would be important for them to sit down and say, are we looking for, to have Halifax come in and provide service under an intermunicipal agreement? Are we looking to maintain our own?
You're right.
They need to like spell that out for us, I think, and, and that's important for us to even put together our cost analysis. I don't know how, you know, until we know what that is, I mean, we could always put a proposal together and say, well, this is our proposal to do X, Y, and Z, do you want this or not? But I don't know if that's the best way of going.
Well, in the same token, we have to come up with some direction as to what we would like to see, too.
Right.
Not, not just react to what their needs are.
Right, which I think is why, you know, we, we're, you did an awesome job with, like, the different proposals. I know you just said something I just came up with, but there, there are three options that I think are worth exploring, each of them. And I think, um, that's our job on fire studies, to sort of vet that and to do those whole cost analysis. And then, as we've said before, I'm not so sure it's gonna be a cost savings for our community, but I think that we will have an even more efficient department in the sense of.
The set level of service would be better.
Yes, because I think we may be able to maintain some more staff than we were.
Intention is a big part of this.
And I think that's, you know, my brief conversation with them yesterday, I think that they, at least two of the selectmen I spoke to, understood that. They, you know, it wasn't about an initial cost savings from what they're paying right now, but how can it make their department safer, how can it make, I mean, community safer? How can it make the department better and, you know, increase the level of service? So, I think both sides kind of recognize that.
And I also think because, you know, if we finish the study, and again, if our residents say, you know what, that makes sense, let's move forward with it, then we have the challenge of the, of the agreement. And I know my name is Kim Ryan, I'm a control freak.
No way.
But this is gonna be the biggest challenge for all of us. And to have that raw conversation with the selectmen to say, we get, like, everybody's gonna want to be in charge, but we have to think about, we're not always gonna be sitting at this table, and we have to do.
There's a, the problem that I see with, with the issues that we're facing right now, Halifax is in pretty good shape. Plimpton is not, as far as having to put a temporary chief in, the work, what's going on, and it's always gonna be who's in charge? Who, who, who are the people gonna be responsible for, for scheduling? Who's gonna be responsible for payroll? All those little nitty gritty things gonna work out, because that's where the, use the like, the power play comes in. Who's in charge? Who do we respond to? You know, who are the townspeople gonna call if there is an issue with the, with the fire department or the service they're getting? Those are the kind of things that I see as a citizen, what the hell's going on?
Yeah, and those are the governance things.
Those are the things you're gonna have to work on.
But, and also in that meeting, Charlie, I didn't mean to exclude you, of course, you needed to be there. So Christine Joy seemed pretty open, um, to having that sort of sit down. It's not gonna stop us from meeting on Tuesday, we're still moving forward, we're still gonna examine that, but I think just by sitting down and have that brief conversation about how do we spend this money, and how much money do we want to save for those kinds of things, and I, you know, like, it could be a new uniform patch.
We have some, some of that money that's automatically put aside in the grant application, but there's 30,000 left that Plimpton had designated, from what I read in their application, was to create the intermunicipal agreement.
Okay.
What is being discussed now is a little, something a little different than that.
No, we would still need a consultant to do that, but I'm talking about the others.
What I'm saying was the email that was sent over to Charlie was.
Oh, yes, but I think, I'm sorry. When I talked to Christine Joy, I think that she felt confident that we would be able to do that part.
Right.
Here.
And training?
No, not, besides the training, but the, the vetting, the actual study.
Right, the cost analysis.
Yes. She, she, she said, okay, you know, I called her, I said, you know, this is what we were thinking, and I don't know if you want to spend the money, because we feel confident that we've sort of done this before, and she was like, oh, that's great, you know, we're really open to that. I said, I know that's just us speaking, and so we, maybe you, it makes sense for all six selectmen to get together and just sort of talk about their vision.
And feel everybody out, so that we know what their intention is, you know, is this just to placate somebody, or is this someplace we really want to look at going?
But does that make sense to you?
It, it does to me.
Do you feel comfortable with that?
Doesn't have to be a, a real long meeting, just a sort of a, let, let's make sure we're all on kind of the same page here, not specifics, but at least in general.
Right, and then we can.
Well, give the, the two committees some direction.
Right, yeah, right.
Give me some direction, give the two committees some direction, and I think.
And I think at some point, and I've said this to you, and I said it to Christine, is that, you know, at some point, if this is going as positive as we think it's gonna go, that we end up merging the two fire studies at one point, like, the Plimpton and the Halifax groups get together and sort of finish vetting out the, the minor details of, you know, I know I'm just making like a patch or whatever.
If it gets that.
If it gets that, if it gets to that point. No, I know, no.
See, what, what my concerns are on it, I, I come from a state where there, you have three towns that are already in a municipal agreement. You have one local station, satellite stations around, and all controls that comes from one place. See, Massachusetts unfortunately is one of those states that says, I want my, even if I only got six people in town, I want my own fire station, I want my own police station, because I'm gonna be able to call. Unfortunately, that's, that's the mentality.
Yeah.
So I hope it works, because I think it benefits both towns. But until you get past that.
Right.
Well, I think we knew that the emotional attachment was probably the biggest obstacle.
Yeah, that, that's always the biggest obstacle.
Yeah.
But it's becoming a financial problem now, too. So that tends to mitigate.
And it's not just happened here, but there's like three other places in Massachusetts right now where it's been recommended, and they're like actively pursuing. We, these two, in these two communities, like the MRI report says that the conditions were right for this to happen here, where if, you know, in other parts, it's not. We have, you know, it's this, both towns have similar struggles with retention and those types of things, funding the department, and so all of those things make it a, a good place where it could possibly happen, but a lot of obstacles between them.
Right.
The geography tends to work for us.
It's part, like, if you, if you were to erase the line that separates Plimpton and Halifax, and just look at the, the parcel of land where the two stations are, like, all of that is perfect.
Yeah.
You know, we couldn't design it any better than it, than it is, so.
So we'll see, and we'll see if there's actually an appetite for our community, because that's what's gonna stop us on our track if our residents aren't interested at all. But in order to present the different options, we need to do the research, and so that when we do the forums, we have something intelligent to talk about.
But to your point earlier, we need some direction.
Yeah.
So how, how do we want Charlie to respond?
So I think that, Charlie, if you could just ask them to come up with some dates that we could sit down and meet with them?
Mm-hmm.
But in the meantime, we'll continue to do what we were gonna do on Tuesday, and then, um, you know, this, it, because in part of the consulting, you know, I don't think it should be a chief consultant that's gonna help us with this agreement, I think it needs something like a Bernie Lynch.
Mm-hmm.
Or a Rocco Longo, I know that, in that group, because it's really a municipal management thing about how it's, you know, what's, are there assessments, is it based on population, like, the whole thing? Or is it just gonna be a contract?
Yeah, operational things, I think are pretty easy, you might be able to, you know, if I came up with a plan, maybe have someone take a look at it, but I don't think that there's gonna be major operational concerns. I think, like you said, it's gonna be more of the detail, you know?
Yeah.
Oh, it's fun.
Yeah, and we've learned.
Muscle flexing for what?
And we've learned things that have worked for us in our regional school contract, and we've known things that don't work for us. And so this is an opportunity to sort of, um, for both communities to, that have learned through different regional things to make it right. So, we'll see.
So, what I'm hearing so far is, I don't know, try try for a Wednesday or Thursday, simply because we're still in the busy season on Mondays and Tuesdays, but try for a Wednesday or Thursday, set up a meeting with Plimpton, with the board, obviously they can invite my counterpart, Dennehy, if anybody else, you know, from the finance committee, or anybody else that they want to bring in, or same here, we may want to tell somebody.
Whose house we could meet in?
Well, last time we met in their place, I would say we should meet over here this time, just, even though it's been a year and a half, that's okay with the board?
Oh, yeah.
Meet in the restaurant.
That's fine. But I think we should make it a round, I don't think it should be a formal selectmen's meeting, I think it should be a roundtable discussion, so that, up in the great hall, so that we can all sort of just.
So I could.
Yeah, I thought that was really helpful.
Yeah. As far as Ms. Dennehy's proposal or idea on the Coxway, basically, would say is, we'll bump that to part of the discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that Christine will probably get to her sometime tomorrow to talk about the conversation that we had, so. Um, is there anything else that we?
No, I think that pretty much.
For this?
You got your fire vehicle back yet?
Uh, yeah, it's the, hopefully by the end of the week.
Um, what, which is the trailer?
You weren't, you weren't driving, were you?
The trailer that was in the.
Oh, it's a, that's a maze trailer.
Okay, so that's why I thought it said, but it also said a lot of other things that was, it was there.
Well, so, um, one of the companies that does board up, they don't, they bring the trailer to different fire departments, use the training prop. We have the, um.
But it also, it's used for, the company's, well, no, the company uses it for, um, if you have a building emergency or something like that.
No, that's what the company does.
Yes, right.
That trailer is strictly a maze prop. They, they kind of advertise on it. We have our Fire Explorer program that we're running again for the high school students, so we kind of brought that in for some, part of their training that we're doing with them and our old guys can go through.
Anybody loot, get, anybody lost in there yet?
Well, you're welcome to come down and give it a shot tomorrow.
Charlie, I think it would be kind of cool.
Oh, yeah, right.
You know what?
The full pack.
I'm gonna have one of your cookies waiting for you at the end of the night.
Me and the rat, we'll see who gets there first.
No, Charlie, I even want you to be eating by a rat.
No, whoever, whoever gets there first gets the cookie, me or the rat.
All right, okay.
In the maze, he's.
Right.
Some of us could.
It's better than getting a pellet.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Bye, Darlene.
You can, you can tell, you can tell your bodyguard you can leave now.
Okay, I will.
Bye.
You know, are they here for any particular reason, or are they just like hanging out?
Harassment.
No. Are you here for any particular appointment, or just hanging out?
Just an harassment.
Harassment.
Okay, that's fine.
Awesome.
And they're doing a good job of it.
You're not.
Well, actually, I haven't heard anything yet, because you. Well, that's, that's the whole thing. I'd rather them to say something and give me a look.
I did.
I'm gonna write you a report.
I did make, um, not on the warrant or anything, um, and I'm not asking the board to do anything, I did give the board a handout from the soccer association. They had proposed putting in a.
Lights, a grapple.
Floodlight of some sort, um, along with other things, in the parking lot there at Summit Street. Um, they just sent this over a couple of hours ago, and I have, they sent it to Dick Steele also, so what I said to them was that, well, I was going to bring this to you tonight, I would expect that the board would want some comments from Dick Steele before doing anything else, so this will get, I'll bring this back on the 10th.
And wouldn't we normally, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just off the top of my head, we have people in the communities that live in the homes and stuff, that they don't have streetlights, and all that.
Well, I think the soccer association pays for that streetlight. The, um, the flood, or the floodlight, they want, yeah. Yes, we don't get the bill for that one.
Then why do we have to put this in the national grid?
Because it's our property.
Ah, okay.
So, um, if the board, I, so, I guess there's a couple of things that the board wants to talk about, zoning articles first, and then the rest of the warrant. I've not, and also, I guess I have a question whether the board, I know you're already having the fire study committee meeting on Tuesday, six thirty, I have not prepared the special town meeting, um, because I was working on the, um, articles for the annual, including the zoning articles. I didn't know whether the board wanted to have some sort of special meeting before we go to press on the sixth, or I'll get everything typed up for the special, and if the board can get it to the board, um, in the next few days, and if the board have any questions, they could talk with me, and I'll make any revisions that are necessary. I don't know how the board wanted to handle, um, more the special than the annual and that. The annual, at least, for the most part, I've got, I have that before you now.
Any thoughts anymore?
Do we have a law on the special? I know that we're gonna have two of the article, like, we'll have the fire suppression.
There may be a dozen.
Yeah, but I don't think that there's anything earth shattering on the special, right?
No, I wouldn't expect so.
No, so I know we were gonna put the, um, a couple of the capital items, so that it could get funded right away. I mean, I, I think.
Yeah, well, so, I will, I will, you know, in which case, what I'll simply still do is make sure that the board's fully informed what's gonna be on the special.
Yes.
Okay. Um, for the zoning, do you want to take that first, or do you want to take the warrant?
Can we do the warrant?
Sure.
Do you mind?
No, let's, let's do it.
Because that zoning, like, weighs me down. That stuff weighs me down. No, it weighs me down, all right.
Okay, so, it's really the traditional order of things still, um, reports, wage and personnel, they'll be meeting on Friday, um, I don't know whether they're, that's gonna be their last meeting before you go to press or not, um, but I still need, obviously, the amendments from wage and personnel.
The plan is to have a long meeting on Friday and get everything done.
Fix the salaries for the elected officials, that's a finance committee article, I don't know whether they're gonna get to that Thursday, or to, I'll wait until next Monday. There's the operating budget.
Oh, Thursday's gonna be canceled.
This Thursday?
Yes, I, I'm so sorry, I talked to Gordon earlier today.
You just want me to have more nights off, you don't want me to keep you here anymore?
I'm ninety percent sure, I'm ninety percent sure. He, he's not gonna be there, Linda Bragg isn't gonna be.
Well, we knew that would happen this Monday, too.
So he said he was gonna cancel it, but I don't know if he's done it, and Kendra's out for the rest of the week, so I would contact Mel just to verify that.
Okay, right, when, when, I mean, this is obviously since what, since Monday night, you've heard this.
Yes, I talked to him about, at about one o'clock this afternoon.
We'll find out. Come on, Pam.
And I explained him, he had talked to, he had, I said, did you? I kind of gave him an update that they had gone through and, and, yes, that we had done our part on this side of the budget to sort of meet the number, and he had a conversation with Mel about it, so.
Um, okay, well, finance committee, whatever, um, five is the reserve fund, um, just so you know, the, somebody may wonder where the revolving fund article went.
That was fantastic.
That's why there's a message there between articles four and five, there is no longer revolving fund article. We put the bylaw into place, we don't have to vote, we're down one article, at least each year.
The one's less vulnerable.
Yes. Um, so five is the reserve fund, um, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve are the contracts with the four unions and the two chiefs. We are going to executive session to talk about contract negotiations later tonight. We are going to executive session to talk about contract negotiations later tonight. Thirteen's the traditional article for the co-op extension service, and fourteen is the Chapter 90 article. State legislature needs to approve the Chapter 90 funding, so I can fill in that last blank. And then we get into, in essence, the capital articles and all the appropriations. Beans of Town Roads is Article A1. A2 is a large dump truck for the Highway Department. A3 is a tractor to replace the 1988 Kubota.
Whoa, no, whoa.
Well, that was, that was their original, I.
No, we're not doing that one.
Well, I think, I want to talk to Steve again, because at one point Steve said, I want the article in there, but I want to pass over it. So I need to talk to Steve. I don't think he's looking, he may not be looking for the money for this year, but he basically wants to tell people, hey, I'm gonna be asked.
Set the table for it.
There's no funding for it. There's no funding.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'll, I'll talk to Steve about that. Make sure he wants that still on there, even though he knows that there won't be funding for it.
What are you talking about?
Mind you, there are other, there are other articles that Steve asked for that I think you're gonna strike from the list.
Yes.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
I'm sorry, I'm like leaping on that kind of stuff.
That's fine. No, it's simply that I run into problems making assumptions of stuff. I'd rather put everything in at the beginning and if we're till. Here, you need some, need to chill.
I know, I do.
I'd rather have articles in there and have them taken out than find out I forgot to put something in.
I know.
And four is the frail attachment for the loader.
That's gone, too.
Okay. Five is the lifts and for jack stands.
That's in, because that's for the fire, yeah, that, yeah.
Six was for the full-time position for the Highway Department, which is out. Seven, A7 is the hook lift maintenance, I believe is in.
Um, hook lift, oh, that's for the forest fire truck, yeah. That's so that they can revamp the forest fire truck. Remember, they're gonna get the old forest fire truck?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's, is that the small lift that was gonna go in the back of the truck? Cause I don't think.
Says hook lift.
The $15,000 one?
That's different than the, the Highway Department was gonna get the old forest fire truck, put a dump body on it.
Yes, that's another article.
An item for the lift.
Okay.
Which I think what's that, what that is, I, I don't think that was.
Okay.
Recommended.
Okay, I will make sure, I'll talk to Steve and Sandy, make sure.
I could be wrong, but I'm almost following.
No, I think you're right.
I'll talk to them. The vehicle maintenance line item A8 is gonna get dropped. Same thing with the bar maintenance line item A9. He, he brought these in a separate article, that's why we're this way rounding the line.
Yep.
There's 211 for the gas mix, I have to rewrite the wording on that, I'll talk to Steve about that.
That's still on, but we talked about that being proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Just because he's got so many things on the warrant.
And I think also to get that on to the special is one, is that on the special?
Yes, that needs to go on, yeah, that needs to go on the special. And the thought is, it's not just the Highway Department that used the underground.
Right, police, fire, water, yeah. 10A is the $100,000 for paving the parking lot?
That did not make the cut.
Okay.
$100,000?
That's what he wrote in originally.
That was 39 when we looked at it.
Okay, well.
$139?
No, it was 39.
Whatever I had in the folder is what I went with. Labor position got taken out, that's for the cemetery for A11. The second A11 is the same thing, so that got taken out, too. $70,000 for the cab over truck with fork, hook lift, sander and plow, replace 708 for the cemetery department.
Wasn't one you just discussed, the hook lift?
Another hook lift, we can't have too many. Okay, so that finishes the Highway Cemetery. A13, this is basically to retire the debt for the water tar. It's a large amount, but the Water Department has that in its reserves. The idea is to bring the debt, that debt down, so that when they are gonna be needing in the next couple of years, new, significant repairs to the well systems and such, they'll have that money available. 14 is an article I had for the wireless access points and cameras at the elementary school. That's in there because of the work we're gonna be doing with the fire suppression system, that that equipment needs to come down and then be put back up.
Yeah, so that goes on the special?
Yep. $18,000 to replace the fiber optic cables at the elementary school.
That goes on the special, too, I think. Is that one of the ones that goes on the special?
I'll ask.
Yeah, can you ask?
Yeah.
I think that was supposed to go on the special.
I don't think we ever got this article from Silver, from Silver Lake for the.
We didn't get it.
Sure, I'm gonna talk to Joy and Christine and make sure.
Yeah, I think it's within their budget.
Okay, I'll talk to Joy and Christine.
Yeah.
But these were, these were for three projects, removal of lights and poles at the Circle Field, replacement of the flow box at the wastewater treatment plant, and repair of the storm drains on the property. A17 is for the $14,750 for the Assessors Recertification Account, that's a traditional annual article.
Tradition.
18 is the $7,500 from the Wetlands Fund for the Charles for the Conservation Commission, we see that every year. $14,000 for the two new copying machines at Town Hall to replace the large ones we've have.
Thank God, those have been awful since day one.
And Charlie, you're gonna propose them, I love that.
Yes, I know. Well, I'm supposed to be office machines, whatever.
Yes, you are.
Yes.
And everything else.
Back when Jess left, I got dumped, that.
Hot potato, hot potato.
A20 stood $8,000 for two marked police vehicles, $20,000 for A21.
Nope, that takes out.
The 20's out?
A21 is out.
Okay.
No bulletproof vest. We have enough, and he has a grant.
Okay. A22 is out also, then, I think the raises and pages for the Fire Department is including in that.
Yes, that's out because it becomes, and within the budget.
And the same thing for the turnout here, he's gonna pump that out of his budget.
Yes, that's out, yep.
A24 is $125,000 to rehab an equipment in one. A25 is $34,000 for new rescue tools for the Fire Department.
Yes, that's the Charles in life.
Yeah. A26 is $175,000 for the forestry firefighting truck.
Yep, that's in.
And that repeated for some reason.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Doesn't paying enough attention? You need two, whatever I can say. A27, $15,000 for the Police Chief Recruitment and Assessment Center. Now, do you want that in the special, simply that would allow me to, okay, because, we may, at least, we wouldn't, we're not gonna be hiring until later into 18, but doing, you know.
We need to.
Contracting with a firm and everything like that.
Yeah, because it's gonna take the summer. We need to kind of move on.
Right. A28 is a placeholder for right now, in case the town meeting does decide it wants to purchase one or more of the Chapter 61A lands. Be more specific in the article about all the parcels. It is unlikely we'll have an amount in here in time for the printing of the warrant, but at least it will be there in case.
Yep.
I believe it's two voting machines or three?
Out.
Out?
It's out.
Because she has the money or what's that?
No, we don't have the money, and we're, yeah.
Okay.
It's out for this year.
Okay. I do have, this is Article A30 for a truck for the municipal and school building.
Yep, that's still.
Okay, but I need to, I need to talk to them about a description.
Yes, um, yes.
Okay, I'll talk to Steve.
Scott.
Scott, sorry. A31 for the garage doors at the Highway Barn, $21,700. A32 to repair and replace the windows at the Highway Barn is A200 for A32. A33, $80,000 for the HVAC systems at the police station.
Yes, he may, Scott may have an updated number for you on that.
Yeah, he just asked me for the prevailing wage information. Today I got it back to him, because some of the folks he's working with, just to get informal, since he hasn't gone out to bid or anything like that, just get an idea of what we're talking, so he may be able to provide you a little bit later on. I have, again, sometimes I just had a short note, this is the pump staging.
Did we do the pump staging? We did, yeah.
But I think I need to give some more verbiage in here.
Yep.
Just to, so if I'm.
Linda's got one in his basement.
Okay. A35, again, for the building committee, this is the replacing, repair, replacing the dump body of the old forest fire truck.
$4,000.
$4,000, yes.
$780 for solar lights to illuminate the flagpoles.
That did, I don't think that made the cut.
I think it did.
Did you?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, technically, they're supposed to be.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, no, it probably did.
$8,400 for the recycling center to purchase and install a new swap shed and shelving. That, I believe, made.
I think that made the cut, because it was coming from, um.
Their own.
It was coming.
It must have come from something else.
It was coming, yeah. It was coming from their.
Unbalance.
Yes, thank you.
And same also, they're coming, $9,500 for the purchase and installation of the compactor there.
Oh, wait a minute, let me.
No, they're in.
Okay, wait, wait, let me just see that compactor one. I don't think that's in, Charlie.
Okay, I'll talk to.
I don't recall any.
Yeah, no, I don't think that.
Then let me talk to Steve.
Can you check on both of those?
I'll talk to Steve and Susan, yeah.
I know this.
They may be getting a grant for that.
Okay. You know what, you're right. So double check with them.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I have $8,400. I do have eighty, I do have it in there.
For the swap shed, yes.
But I also have the compactor for $9,500.
Okay, but let me make, I'll make sure.
And they're coming from solid waste retain earnings, so that's why.
That's why, yeah.
Yep.
Then we have the petition articles. A39 is South Coastal County's Legal Services for $3,500. $3,500 for the South Shore Women's Resource Center, $3,500.
Can we talk about those right now? Because I know the Finance Committee isn't here, but we, because we've been trying to hold back, I know we really like to help those two organizations, but because we've asked people to sort of relook at their budgets, and these are, I know they assist our community, and I think that both of those organizations are pretty tolerant when the years that we haven't been able to give the $3,500, that perhaps this year, because, this is just, because we're looking at cutting things back, that perhaps we lower them to $2,500 for this year.
Didn't we talk about this at the last meeting?
I think they have increased to.
They had increased to $4,500.
Oh, that's right, okay, all right. Well, we had, we had the, the next article, which is the South Shore Community Action Council.
Yes.
They originally came in for five, and the board last week talked about bringing it down to 35, because they themselves asked the board to put the article on, because they had not gotten, gone through the petition process.
Yeah.
And the board said last week, we'll, we'll put it on under our name, but we're gonna put in for 35, not 5,000.
Okay, so can we have that conversation? Am I being too much of a miser by wanting to reduce it?
Talk to your colleagues. You have the floor, Mr. Roy.
No, I'm saying that, you know, in these times when we're trying to sort of reduce other budgets, and, again, they will still benefit our community, but I think that they would be understanding for us to maybe have a lower amount, but I may be being too.
I think we ought to leave it up to the town voters.
Okay, I'm being too much of a prefered voter.
And you really do a lot for the town.
Okay, all right, we'll keep it. All right, fine.
Okay.
But we moved that to 3,500, not 5,000.
3,500 already is.
Okay, well, we'll get to 42 in a minute.
Okay.
But the first three, the two petition articles for legal services in the women's center are 3,500, those are petition articles. 41 is the $3,500 that the board's article for South Shore Community Action Council. Then we had a separate petition article from a new organization, at least as far as the town's concerned, Health Imperatives Plymouth and South Shore, that asked for five. That's a petition article, I can't change that.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that anybody has to support it or oppose it, or whatever your feelings are, but I'm stuck with putting the article on as is. A43, the.
You can speak at the meeting.
I will.
The board approved putting, see how fast I worked on this? While I was sitting here, I came up and planted the pesto lane one.
Amazing.
I don't, I think I'm taking A44 off, and I checked, we may have the possibility of purchasing the streetlights outside of several ornamental lights for a dollar.
Oh.
Which might save the town some money in the long run, because the way streetlights work is you're getting charged for the power, obviously, but you're also getting, essence, charged for the depreciation of the light, but at some point, just like over mortgage, it stops. We stopped on our streetlights years ago, but we're still paying that depreciation amount every year. So I'm gonna go back, I, working with Metropolitan Area Planning Council about this, there's also possibly long-term that we could replace them with LED lights, but I'm not going there this year, because I'm not prepared, I haven't done everything I want to line up. I don't know whether the board wants to at least put a placeholder article for Mont Ponce, I'm not saying there's any money, but if between now and May 14th, we work out that either we need money or want to put money aside for Mont Ponce pond activities, it would be helpful to have the article already in place.
And is that including fun, I'm sorry, funding from the 319?
No, because the 319 money is, we don't have to appropriate that money.
We don't have to appropriate that money, it's already there. The $75,000 is what?
Is DPH.
EPH.
And the 319 money, but in case we, you know.
Yeah.
There's no harm in leaving a placeholder.
Yeah, we don't have any money, but.
Right, I understand that. I don't, I need to talk to Scott about the streetlight or floodlight over at the library in the parking lot. I don't know whether that got fixed or not, and whether he needs funds for that.
Oh, yeah.
But I know that we. A46, I talked with town council, and this is, on the Silver Lake budget. When, the last time Silver Lake met about their budget, Gordon Andrews, who's the chair of the Finance Committee, had mentioned at that meeting that he certainly was not going to be in favor of the budget as it was being presented then. The Finance Committee's not made any sort of decision about a recommendation for Silver Lake. They didn't make one back on Monday night, I guess they're not gonna make one on Thursday, but.
Yeah, maybe not, and I also spoke with Christine Joy today about that. She had reached out to me over the weekend about trying to get a meeting together between us and Kingston, because she had heard from Elaine Fury that she may not, that Kingston may not be supporting it either. So she's gonna get back to me on a date.
What I talked to town council about was whether it was legal to have it, we would vote whatever number the Finance Committee recommended. Let's say it's a lower number. But I also want to avoid having another town meeting, because the process is that if we said no, and the other two communities said yes, we're still stuck paying it. But to do that, I have to come back, have another town meeting at some point and appropriate the additional money. I asked council, can we have a separate article that would be a contingent vote, basically saying, it's this number unless the other two towns vote yes on that budget that's been presented, in which case it's gonna be the higher number. And he said yes. And so what I'd like to do is put an article in there, because setting aside anything else, it usually runs a couple thousand dollars to hold a town meeting. Now, we may very well have one between now and the setting of the tax rate, again, I don't know, but if we have one, we would have one for another reason, we wouldn't have one just for this. And that way, we might avoid a couple thousand dollars. The only concern, I'll put it this way. When Sandy worked on the budget during the last few days, with the, she did include the higher number in her calculations, to determine if the town, for whatever reason, voted the higher number, would we, what money would we have for waging increases, and it fits within there. So it's, won't be a matter that if we vote the lower number, the other two towns say yes, and then the contingency says, okay, now you're spending even more money, that suddenly we have to cut back on everybody else's budget to make it up. So.
You've got it worked in.
It's worked in. So I think that would be a good procedure to have, instead of having another town meeting on the subject. My, it's up to the town to make that decision, but again, it could be another article that it would be there, be available if that's what the town wanted to do.
Have, have we had any feelers out with other towns in what direction?
Well, I think that's what, Kim was just mentioning a minute ago.
Doesn't that take your vote away?
If we vote, but we already voted no.
You voted no, but then you voted, if the other towns vote for it, we're gonna pay it back.
Well, but we're obligated to pay it if the other two towns do.
Yeah, I, I just, your strategy is what you're saying.
But, I mean, you can do it that way, but, and if it happens, then, I don't know, who's paying the two thousand dollars for another town meeting? Because we're gonna, we'll be required to have another town meeting.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that if you go, sort it this way, you go, but if you go there, you're paying.
Which is what we're gonna have to do anyway.
I understand, but then you would have to have that meeting to do it.
Right.
But if you, I think you're going in a weak...
The problem is, we're not gonna have any, we're not gonna know upfront anyway until everyone's had their town meetings.
Right.
Regardless of what the boards indicate, it's ultimately up to town meetings in the three towns, that gets problematic.
Well, we're, we're the first one, because even though technically Kingston starts before we do, they don't vote on the appropriations until June. And Plimpton will be for a few days after us, I believe.
Yeah, the start wins.
But, I wanted to, you know, if the board wants to do it, it's, I can write it, if the board doesn't want to do it, then I'll just take it out. I mean, I'm not, you know, a true believer one way or the other, I just wanted to have this as an option.
Did you ask, did you ask Gordon about?
No, I asked, I only talked to town council about it.
Not Gordon.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Deal with Gordon.
Yeah, she, she, you accented it correctly.
I mean, I don't, I understand where you're coming from. I totally know where you're coming from.
And I'm not going to press until next Friday.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so I think we can have a conversation.
So I still have, I still have an obvious, you know, I still have the option of talking with the finance committee as a whole on Monday.
I think that's a good option.
Yeah, I mean, because either way we go, if we voted down and don't have the other option before, we still have to do what the other two towns do if they vote for it or against it.
But we have to convene another town meeting to vote for.
Well, then we'll know that and probably schedule something, you know, the first Monday or Tuesday in September.
Yeah, but it costs us money to do that, it's such a drag.
But there's always a possibility we may have to do something.
Yeah.
We haven't got the other, we've got other things on the horizon that we may have to adjust, Pope's Tavern, we've got fire suppression.
All right, Rudy, we'll talk about Monday.
Okay, okay. Um, okay, so, there are four articles to deal with the two possible pilots.
Oh, wow.
These are the solar arrays, the one over on River Street and the one over in Franklin Street.
Okay.
There are two articles for each, one authorizes, the town authorizes the board and the board of assessors to work out a pilot agreement. The second article is then to, once we have that in place, to approve it. And we've done this before on another solar array, because what, there are separate votes, and the first one we did, for the Mont Ponce street. We voted, we got the authorization, then had to wait until the next town meeting sometime months later to approve the pilot. If we don't have, the idea here is during the next couple of months, that the pilot gets worked out, you're satisfied, the assessors are satisfied, obviously the other parties are satisfied. It's all done informally, in a sense of it, nothing's binding. So if town meeting then authorizes, we then have it available for that town meeting and not have to wait whatever number of months to get to the actual contract. So that's why there are two articles for each of those. But if we don't have a pilot by May fourteenth, then we just, right, I, the first two, the, you can negotiate articles, we can do, we just won't have a contract article. I still need to talk to Larry, I need to talk, I think, to Inspector General's office on the procurement laws for Yelm Street property.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, what, what sort of town meeting vote we might need to transfer the land.
They're, they're not still talking about trying to take it by any means, but...
No, this is the one that we're gonna sell to the lovely...
No, no, didn't they, didn't, we can have some conversation about whether it was gonna be more expedited.
That was off the table, that's why they were looking to get estimates on the cost.
No, no, I understand, but they would have to do that.
Article eight fifty-one is the petition article for the dog park.
You know, we wanted to have the dog people in so that we could ask about the maintenance of this.
Well, I can, I, it's a petition.
But now it's gonna go to the president.
Well, it's a petition article, I don't have any...
Can we still have them?
We can, we can invite them in for the town.
Yeah, we need to invite them in, because I, as much as I would love the idea of having a dog park, it's one more thing that we have to care for financially, according to this article, where the Hops people are raising the money for the ma, long-term maintenance, so I don't know that we want to take on another big project that we have to maintain.
Okay, so then that finishes the article, the appropriation articles, we're in the acceptances and bylaws section. I talked to bond council and we, there's always a small amount of premium, bond premium we use to pay the bonds. What bond council has said is that it would like to have the town vote, this B one article that actually also allows us better, I guess they're more confident of our ability to use the premiums if we vote this. It doesn't change anything else about the bonds, except our ability to use the premiums to help pay for them. B two, I wanna check with Holly one more time. She had suggested putting this in, I guess they were looking at the possibility. It ended up being that we had a service member, but who was not in the National Guard, was a regular armed services member who was not eligible for this, but National Guard members would be eligible if we accepted this. We accepted this, oh, eight or ten years ago, which is an abatement for members of the National Guard who are serving.
No, I'm just smiling, because my son just came back from Egypt and he got his excise tax of the bill.
Yes.
Can I get an abatement? I go, no.
So I'll talk with Holly, see if they want to keep this in here. It has to be renewed every so often, it's not a permanent acceptance, and she may say just for now, let's strike it out there. B three, we talked about increasing the number of members on the beautification committee from three to five, so...
Six.
B four, back when we, yes, when, you have to get the three, you need to get more numbers before you say bingo.
No, but you said before, and then you said back, so that was kind of before.
It's late. When the town voted the sales tax at two percent, that had been the maximum allowed under the state law.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that was the maximum allowed in the referendum for the retail marijuana. However, the state legislature, when it made its changes, also increased the maximum sales tax to three, so I want to bring that up.
Retaliate, bringing it up, just say it.
We do have a petition article for the change in zoning for retail marijuana to allow it by special permit in the commercial zone. Right now, it's not allowed, it's only allowed in the industrial areas. That's a petition article, so that's on the warrant. Separately, I believe I have the following. Some of the, I worked this through with Rob, a lot of these things we're not doing for one reason or another. The finalists, in essence, that made it to the cut at the end of the afternoon for other changes are the live entertainment and the agricultural residential zone. It's, a number of changes have to happen. I need to cha, to separate out indoor and outdoor entertainment events, and the techs to deal with those. But this, basically, the, the concept is that we would allow the, in the agricultural residential, commercial, outdoor amusements, but with the same limitations we've been talking about, no more than two days, et cetera, things like that, five acre minimum, which is what the ZBA had recommended. So that's set up, to allow for that, we'll see whether the townspeople want to go and do that. Alternate energy systems in the industrial two zone, Rob and I went, okay, this, the industrial two zone is the old landfill over on the Bridgewater, East Bridgewater lot.
Yes.
Mount Halifax.
Pardon?
Mount Halifax.
Something like that.
In the day, yes.
The, probably is that the state actually says you cannot not allow the energy systems in zones, so we have to, for whatever reason, back in the nineteen eighties, the town voted to not allow, for some reason, solar, et cetera.
Really?
It wasn't, it wasn't solar.
No, but, no, it was a gas plant.
The gases that were coming from the thing, and that actually ended up being built.
Yes.
But it wasn't producing enough methane, so we ended up closing it.
But what, we have somebody who's interested in building solar on that property, but to do, I mean, we could have them appeal to the ZBA and go through a lot of song and dance on that. It's just gonna be easier, cleaner cut to make the change in our zoning than simply say it's permitted as it is in the other zones.
Yeah, and it's in conflict with statute, so...
Right, so, that's why that one is in there.
Do we charge them more because they're closer to the sun than the other ones?
Well, we've got more power.
Solar tax, yeah. Solar, solar.
We talked about multifamily, the only change I'm proposing there is to delete the requirement that each of the buildings in the multifamily have to be on individual lot, we've had a lot of controversy about that.
Is that part of the zoning articles that you want?
Yes.
Can we skip those and finish these? Are we done? Are we done?
Yeah.
Can you move on?
Yeah.
No.
Well, the only ones I have, or, I need to go back and talk to Larry about the acceptance of the streets, we never, we've never completed the acceptances on those.
Oh, we have hair and...
Yeah, so I need to go back, I think it's more documentation than anything else.
Okay.
So that's one on the multifamily, the...
No zoning.
Okay, in-law apartments. There are a couple of things, a couple alternatives here, both, Rob and I have been talking about this. Currently, for an in-law apartment, given our statute, you get a permit for five years for the in-law. You're supposed to renew the permit every five years, which is fine. The problem with renewing it is, since you've already limited it to the five years, you've told the abutters and anybody else who's in interest party, this permit will expire on this date. If you make a change, like extend the date, you've got to notify the abutters, you've got to run the ad in the paper, you've got to have the legal hearing again, all that has to happen, which is a very cumbersome way of handling it. Rob and I agree that obviously the permits need to be reviewed every five years, and to make sure that the stipulations are being met by the original applicant. There's no reason not to do that.
So would they call that person and verify?
Yes.
That somebody in the house?
Well, in fact, we would do an inspection.
They're doing that.
We would physically go over there, not just to verify that the person's still there, but verify that the common area still exists, things like that.
What they've been doing currently is that, and they've signed an affidavit that nothing has changed, or the conditions are pretty good.
Okay.
But technically, to Charlie's point, does not meet the letter of the law.
Right.
Okay, so can I just interrupt?
Yeah.
Because, you know, I'm, I struggle with this. If I were to buy the property, already existing in-law, and I ask my friend to move in, that is of no relation, but just a friend, how do I know that I need to come to the town? And then if you find out about it, would they then need to apply?
Because if it is a special permit, it should be on record at the registry, it would show up on the title.
Okay, okay.
That's one reason.
Right.
Okay.
Also, you might check here and see what permits were issued for the property.
Of course you wouldn't do that.
But what if I went to the zoning board and I just bought this house that has an in-law, and I'm told I can't because they're not related?
Right, that's correct.
That, that's right, absolutely.
Because in fact, as a stipulation, it cannot be an income-producing...
Right.
And we want that?
Well, right now you have in-law apartments by special permit. The, you can't, how to put this? You go ahead.
Well, some permits going back a ways actually had language in them, in the special permit that said, should you no longer have a blood relative, or something to this effect, I'm paraphrasing, then you need to remove the kitchen, which is in conflict with state law again, because state law says you cannot unduly regulate the interior portions of the residence. So the whole thing needs to be looked at again, it needs to be cleaned up, and we have to, as a community, decide what we want to do. A lot of communities do in-laws as of right. Even with the stipulations that someone needs to be a relative, just the enforcement side of that is almost impossible.
Well, I don't think it's right.
That's the point.
That's my opinion.
No, that's the point. So now we have to decide.
And that, the fact is, we have duplexes, we're to allow by special permit, what's the difference between the duplex and...
Right, right. You know, it begs the argument that rather than apply for an in-law apartment, you should be applying for a two-family or something different duplex, there's a lot more construction involved than that, but, so, so we need to look at this as a community and decide where we want to go.
But are we doing it to, are we gonna do that this year?
I think Rob and I have a commitment, whether it's a zoning bylaw committee, if it ever gets reestablished, and we're waiting to hear back from committees and such, whether they're interested, or whether it's Rob and myself working on something, I think some point during the next twelve months, we'll put together something.
Oh, so not this town meeting?
No, because, because I think, I think there's, oh, too much discussion needs to happen, in a sense of, for Rob and I to simply say, we're gonna do it this way, I don't mean that in a sense of dictating, but in the sense of, here's a proposal, we're putting on town meeting warrant, is, we're not there yet, because I think we need to be discussing with the planning board and ZBA with...
Take two town meeting minutes.
And you need to get people on board, because zoning articles are the hardest articles to pass at a town meeting, and there has to be a consensus going through.
But can I just ask, like, with a procedure, would it, would it normally come from the ZBA to sort of look at it, or is it normal that the board of selectmen's looking?
I, I'm not gonna go there.
Okay.
Because I would be saying things that I don't want to say.
Okay, so is it appropriate that the zoning enforcement officer is taking a look at it, sees the one who has to?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, I'm just really curious, because I...
Well, and the idea here is more that, there's no change in the bylaw in the sense of that it should be checked every five years, but we're not, we're asking, especially for those folks who are in compliance, not to go through the rigmarole of the...
Right, having to have...
Now, so there's a couple possibilities here. Council came, Land Use Council came up with everything but the hearing and notice, in the sense of that the deadline comes up, letters go out to the abutters saying, hey, it's for your old time, do you have any objection to this? And if no one objects, the ZBA will renew the permit. If there is an objection, then they'll, they'll start afresh, have the hearing, notify the abutters, the ad in the paper, all that, you know. It's one way of doing it. Another way of doing it is even eliminating the notice to the abutters and simply checking to see, are the terms of the permit still being met?
So this is basically a Band-Aid, but the intention is to sort of look at the whole thing?
Yeah, because, yeah.
How we want to handle it.
Yeah, because as Tom mentioned, I think there needs to be a discussion for the town, you know, town officials, but also townspeople. What do you all want? I mean, I think when we did the in-law apartments twenty years ago, that was, the concept was, I wouldn't say new, but there was a consensus that we needed to do something because people, just like today, housing prices had, kept going up, we had people who wanted to move their parents in or something like that.
Yeah.
But have a separate area for them. They didn't want, but the, react, the pushback a little bit was, well, we don't want to turn this into a separate apartment, not a true two-family or a duplex or whatever. So you've got to have the common space, and the utility costs have to be shared, things like that.
And, and some of the special conditions need to be looked at again, too, because there's, there's some restrictions in there in terms of having giant openings between, which really, I mean, you can't then call it, in my opinion, an in-law apartment, you have to call it an in-law space.
Yes.
And that's not what people are looking for. So what happens is, you force people to, to violate the conditions of their special permit, because nobody really wants to live with that. You walk into a, you walk into a home that's just had a in-law addition put on, and you've got a six or eight-foot opening wide open where you cannot put a door on, that's not an in-law apartment. And I don't think that serves, for instance, being of an elderly nature myself, it would not serve my purposes to be living with my kids with, you know, wide-open entrance.
Because you want your privacy.
So, I mean, I think it's natural that everybody wants their privacy. So all I'm getting at is, I know it's well-intentioned, I'm not, I'm not suggesting it isn't, but I think the effect of it is, it causes people to quote-unquote "break the law" or break their condition, violate their condition.
Well, it's, by definition, it's not even what they're calling.
Exactly, that was my point earlier, you might as well, you should call it an in-law space, because it's not really separate.
Okay.
You should call it a house, and if somebody's living in it...
I mean, you're, you're all living in the same house. But over here, you've got a space that you have to walk through eight feet, but everybody can walk through it.
Which, which, which brings up another issue, and, you know, if you, see, it gets so complicated, and I don't want to spend too much time on this, but...
No, no.
If I move my elderly mother into my home, for instance, okay, she's a resident of my home. If I decide to put on another little addition and throw a kitchen in it, just because I need two kitchens, is that an apartment, or is that my home with my mother living in it? You know, we're, we're creating this artificial problem here, so, so that's why we need to look at it.
Right, and if you grew up like Italian, like I did, we had two kitchens.
Likewise, I always had one, my, my, growing up, one in the basement.
We had three.
My, you did, so my question, too, is...
Because we turned the attic into a little in-law apartment.
Oh, did you?
Income-boosting.
So when we have been talking about zoning things, I, I know we invited the zoning board and the planning board, we did that, I think, at least twice over the last three or four months. And I know we talked about the in-law, so is the zoning board of where that you're thinking about this Band-Aid?
Yes.
Oh, perfect, okay. And there, there...
This was, this was part, you know, this was really the major discussion, is how to handle the five-year problem.
So all we need to do now is call all the residents of town, tell them to vote on it.
Well, for, these need to go to the planning board, the planning board will have a hearing on May third for this and the other articles, and we'll see where we go. Maybe that we, the consensus, maybe we pass over this, this parcel at least on May fourteenth.
Okay, so this is the most important question, who's presenting this, because I cannot...
Well, I think it's gonna be a combination for Rob and myself.
Okay, perfect.
But the board of selectmen is gonna be listed as proposer because it needs a confirmation.
Yeah, 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 that's fine, but don't ask me to speak to it, because I won't, I have nothing intelligent.
Um, okay, so that takes care of the in-laws, um, this is somewhat of a housekeeping thing on the estate lots, it's a little weird. Back when the estate lot section was established, I don't know which year it was, it was allowed by special permit through the planning board. Then a change was made in two thousand that the text said, no, or the use regulations and some of the texts said, no, it's no longer by special permit, it's allowed by right. But this last se...
With some conditions, driveway's giving a button.
Right, but the last section still said that the planning board is mentioned as a special permit granting authority, even though there's no longer any special permit to give, and then delete that section, so we're deleting that section.
You down with that, Doug?
I believe that covers the subjects I, we, when I was talking to Rob.
Those are the only two zoning, and so we have the entertainment, we have the...
Multifamily.
Multifamily.
Yes, to eliminate the lot lines.
Yes.
Alternate energy systems, estate lots, the in-laws.
We have scheduled meetings for those subjects.
And then the zoning for the marijuana.
Right.
Just that's...
But that's being controlled by somebody else. But that's been proposed by somebody else.
Yes.
Yeah, not us.
Yeah, it's not. We're not going there.
I already...
I'm not thrilled with that idea.
I don't see a consensus on this board.
Do they see a N three percent?
Pardon?
Where's wholesale? You don't get the three percent.
Yeah, the retail... You mean, the real... Yeah, we'll get the three percent retail sales tax out of that if it ever happens, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that it, except for executive session?
Yeah, except for the executive session. Last PM, if I'm missing anything, you need to get done.
Nope, but I didn't do the... It was crazy, so I think I'm good.
All right, so we're gonna...
Thank you for your input, sir.
Thank you for being an audience.
Oh, should I say...
Should I say youngster?
What?
Whatever you like.
I'll see you Tuesday, Lenny.
Yep, we'll be here.
Will you be able to watch all that stuff? It'll get you to go to sleep. Read that MRI.
For those of you at home, we're gonna go into executive session. We will not be coming out of executive session and conducting any business, but we're going into an executive session for contract negotiations.
For the sergeants, patrol officers, highway firefighters, police chief and fire chief, said conversation, if held in open session, would be detrimental to the interests of the town.
Thank you.
So I'll wait and talk to the WATV. So we're saying good night and thank you.